Keep thinking I have E, so I smashed up food. I don't know, it's great to have some kind of garden. Been working a lot of hours, other than this week, man. Long hours lead to just can't remember. Hello, good to see you, you doing alright?
Hi, good to see you.
Okay, that was perfect.
He forgot to duck when his wife's going.
Um...
Got 7:01, called a order here, the regular meeting at City Council, City Ranses Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, on November 7th, 2016, 7:00 PM. Phone please, rise for the invocation. Lord, we ask you for your blessings for our citizens here in Ranses Pass. We ask you to watch over the people as they come and go through our community. We ask you to ask, to give an extra lending hand and comfort to the DeLyon family that lost their grandmother, mother, yesterday evening, late. We ask you to watch over their children and hopefully find some peace in their heart. She's a beautiful lady. We ask you, Lord, to give, we give you thanks for all the beautiful blessings you give us. We ask you to do things in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is gonna bring us to item 3, presentation proclamations, which will be 3:1, Spirit of Ranses Pass.
Good evening. Jan and Mike Moore of Spirit of Ranses Pass couldn't be here this evening, so we're here on their behalf. And we would like to thank the mayor, council, and community members for supporting our first annual Bacon Fest, which was held at Redfish Bay Boathouse on the 22nd and 23rd. For those of you who were not able to attend, it was a very fun-filled day. We raised a lot of money, and we would like to present this check to council, to the police and the fire department, in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. So we raised that, and that's because of your support. And it is because of the support of our council and our community for coming out and a wonderful group of volunteers.
Thank you all so much.
You're able to do that, so thank you. It's your one, so we look forward to seeing y'all here too, for sure. Yes, of course you can.
If it wasn't for Jan and Mike Moore, we would not have this and a lot of other stuff. They are just awesome people, so selfless. Love this town, always just so up. And I'll just tell you something about Jan, when we finished Stephanie, Stephanie and I did T-shirts, we sold T-shirts. So at the end, we folded them all, took them in there, and Jan, and just Stephanie and I went in there. And Jan was just like, it was the end of the day, and was done. She's just sitting in the chair, just really, really tired, but she will never be short with you. Give you the time. And there was a phone call. And she gets up and answers that phone just as if it was the first call of the day. Just pleasant, how are you, thanks for calling, and all that. And it was someone wanting to know how to write a check to the spirit, you know, of Ranses Pass. So just know that if you see them, they deserve a lot of thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the organization is named appropriately because it really is a spirit-filled group of people that started this in 2013. They have a very good spirit of giving and giving back. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. They'll bring us to item 3:2, presentation from the visitor center, Rosemary.
Good evening. I have a presentation for you, so it's gonna be on this screen. Sylvia's gonna help me with it, but I wear cheaters now this year, all of a sudden. So bear with me when I look at mine, 'cause I can't see anymore. Oh, it's annoying. Tonight, I'm doing the presentation on the visitor center numbers for last year. A little bit late right now, but we had a lot of stuff going on, and so I'm gonna do this right now. And if you want me to do another one for the last six months, I can do that one later on, too, if you want. But this is a visitor, if you double-click on that, Sylvia, it'll blow up just a little bit. This is July through September. We average about eighty-three requests per phone and per visitor center walk-ins during the day. And that's for the, obviously, that's the busy time of the year. Most of those are coming from the directions, maps. Dining, dining has increased so much, people come in looking for a place to eat. Everybody loves to eat. And so that's one of the big things, in addition to that, the lodging and things to do. And if you go to the next page, it's pretty much the same thing, it's just the different months. And then I, on the third page, I combine the totals, and I put in the totals year to year. One more page, Sylvia. And double-click. And this is 2015 to 2016. This report that you're getting is from July of 2015 to June of 2016. That's a report that you get every year, because I turn it in in July. So the numbers at the bottom are the annual totals for the year. Last year, this last year was seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five, and the year before, it was eighteen thousand, ninety-one. That's a decrease at six hundred and forty-six. But I, the only thing I can think of is that more people are going online and getting their own information, as opposed to calling or walking in, and, I mean, we all do that. So that's the only thing I can think, it's not a large decrease, but it is a decrease. And here are the text stop ferry traffic counts. I started taking those in 2011, because I thought it was important for us to know how many people were coming through here and going to Port Aransas. This year, from 2015 to 2016, I noticed there was a substantial decrease in traffic. And I, I'm trying to remember the number, I think I wrote it down. Yeah, it was six thousand, nine hundred, let's see, forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-four cars less this year than last year. That's a lot of cars, that's about three thousand less vehicles crossing the ferry. Our sales tax doesn't go down, but our visitors going to the ferry went down, which, in my opinion, just means that there's a lot more hotels on this side. You know, Portland has hotels, Rockport's increased hotels. All I can think of is that some of the people are now staying on our side and not going to the other side, which is great for us. And these are the same numbers in 2015 and 2016, we actually broke it down. Sylvia asked me about four months ago to break it down for her in cars and trucks. So I broke it down every month, in cars and trucks, with the totals on this side. And that total number for the year was roughly like two million vehicles going, going through here, each year, yeah, huge number. And this is our visitor center website. We had seventy-five thousand sessions and forty-seven thousand users, a hundred and thirty-five page views, thirty-three thousand of those for shrimpery, the other thirty-three thousand are just generic, and then everything else just kind of filters into like stay and play, meetings, events, and that kind of stuff. And that's that same page I was talking about, one more. And then the majority of our visitors are females, of course, so that's who we try to market to, is mostly the females are the ones doing all the reservations, all the shopping, they're buying your clothes, they're doing everything. Okay, that's pretty much the same thing. The other thing I wanted to mention on the tracking that I've noticed, and I think I mentioned that to y'all last year, was that Houston has become our number-one source for visitors. It's, last year, I think we had, just on our tracking alone, they were number one, and then, believe it or not, Corpus Christi was number two, and then San Antonio. So I think that has a lot to do with a lot of the oil industry moving to, some of the bigger, the bigger companies moving to Houston. We market a lot in Houston, we market in Beaumont, we market in Houston, we market in Wharton. And we started marketing, on the other side, Philip, it was your request to go to the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and we're starting to see a lot more from that area, too. So that's how we base most of our marketing, as far as billboards and as far as our social media. We do purchase ads on social media when we do things, even if they're not things that we're doing. Bacon Fest, we, we paid for some advertisement to go on our social media for Bacon Fest, because we felt like it was a reason for people to come and spend the night. So we do, we do that as well. And this is the visitor center performance sheet. Year-over-year, it's from 2013 over to 2015, and then 2016. The hot fund budget allocation was at one sixty-nine, that's what we spent last year. We budgeted one sixty, we spent one sixty-nine. And, let's see, the website analytics, we're at one hundred and thirty-five thousand views. Shrimpery attendance last year was fifty-seven thousand, this year was forty-six thousand, substantial decrease, rain. And that was a loss of revenue of about sixty-four thousand dollars as well, total for shrimpery. We are doing what we can to make up that loss. One of the things we did this year was the state of the city. That brought in an additional seven thousand dollars, which took care of a little bit of that. It's not everything, but it's something, and we'll continue to do that through the rest of the year. We will probably be in the red by the end of the year, but not if I can help it. And this is our budget, and it's really hard for y'all to see up there, I can't even see it. So on this page, I'll just try to go over it with you a little bit. Where, where, our budget for this year, for, the marketing is a hundred and eighty thousand. And off to the right, you'll see the advertisement, hard dollars, where we do billboards, magazines, commercials, radios. That hard number is a hundred and four thousand, and the rest of it would be like the office, administration, you know, the light, everything, all those things that have to be paid. And so we're budgeting a hundred and eighty thousand, and then you have your final page is the breakdown of that. It tells you line item, per line item, what the chamber has spent last year on each area. There's one more page, Sylvia. This one, I think it's a double page, but at the top, it'll break down. It tells you in February, we received twenty-nine thousand in hot funds, and May thirty-two, August fifty-eight, and December fifty-nine, for a total of a hundred and eighty. That's what we budgeted for this year, we're already in that budget right now. And last year, we received a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, we budgeted one fifty-six, we spent one sixty-nine. That was nine thousand dollars over the budget, but we took on that cost, part of the revenue that we get from the things that we do. And so I just wanna, I just wanna say something to y'all, that I really appreciate the confidence that the city has in the Chamber of Commerce to put, to take care of the hot funds and to take care of the marketing for us, for you. And we do what we can to generate revenue, not just for the chamber, but to offset that cost, if there ever is, you know, a shortage of it, which there has been the last few years. Hopefully, when we get a few more hotels, that won't happen anymore. But it means a lot to us, it also means a lot that shrimpery be very profitable, because that's what carries us through when there's a shortfall of hotel motel tax money. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Any questions?
We actually did an audit of hotels as part of Ranses's audit, and there is a lot of folks that are not paying their hotel motel tax, just to cussuring. We found about forty thousand, twenty to forty thousand, that was just left on the table. So in preparation for this year, we will be reporting to the state, and we will, we will be reporting to those agencies that should be receiving some of those hot funds and sales tax that are not, they're not paying their fair share.
Are they just not filing it, or how's it work?
They're just not filing it. Sometimes they don't even register. We have a lot of short-term rentals that are classified, they have a classification, and should be paying their share to the state, but they've not registered with the state, for whatever reason. We have a lot of online capabilities where show, that show they're collecting sales tax, and yet they've not paid their sales tax to the state, they've not filed their appropriate forms for the hotel motel tax. So there is a benefit that is received by the chamber and the city operating, and it's not fair for a lot of those to not pay their fair sharing to the system, so.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
This will move to item 3:3, considering an actual resolution number 2016-793, recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. Is that Henry here?
Yes.
You're up, Henry. Speak to the mic, please. Very first one. There you go, Henry. In case you don't have a copy, you can read it to us. Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
I'm the Ranses Pass Municipal Court Judge, and the resolution that we're going to present to the council states that Texas is celebrating Municipal Court Week beginning today, Friday. This is our court clerk, Milagros Medina. In recognition of the Municipal Court Week, November 7th through the 11th, 2016, a resolution recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts, combined in public impression of the Texas judicial system and largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the City of Ranses Pass Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the City of Ranses Pass Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the City of Ranses Pass is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Ranses Pass municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Ranses Pass, but are bound by the law and the cadence of judicial conduct, and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Ranses Pass Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements.
I don't know if you wanna read the, the rest?
Thank you, Henry.
Henry, you might wanna tell the council how many cases you guys processed, what's your plan for the next, this four years.
Do you wanna finish the resolution, or do you want me to go ahead and...
Go ahead and tell us.
We process, we have our dockets run like from forty-five to fifty cases a week. So we process approximately close to four hundred cases a month. Doesn't say that everybody shows up, but this is the, the process that we have coming in. It does not necessarily, or moving violations, it can be complaints made by other complainants. And we also have the city ordinances that need to be enforced, and they get cited. We also have traffic from the harbor master. So our traffic has tremendously increased with the volume of phone calls, and we apologize, because Millie is one person, and she's trying to answer all the phone calls, and we don't want for the public to get upset if we don't answer the call, but the calls are returned. I also sit and help her answer calls. The traffic of walk-ins are also increasing. We're dealing with a lot of traffic from non-English-speaking individuals, and, but we're happy to say that we're able to accommodate and help everybody that comes in through our doors. We, we treat all of our people that come in with respect, and we're big with that. It doesn't matter what, what walk of life they're coming from, but our priority is, and our objective is to treat everybody with respect. I don't think anybody has any complaints about that from us, because, or about us, because we treat everybody with respect. We are in the process of hiring another court clerk, and I believe that's gonna help us tremendously. I, we would like to thank the police department, because they're, you know, very professional, and the way they, they treat the, the people that they cited, some people are real happy that, I mean, they're, they're in my court. My, the municipal court is not a very popular department. You know, everybody that walks in, we expect for them to be upset, because it's going to affect them. And, and even with the minors that are identified as juveniles, and I don't like that word, but anyway, it doesn't matter that it's the municipal court. The municipal courts care more cases than district courts or federal courts. And it doesn't matter how minute the offense is, it's a dent in your record. And I specify that to the minors, and they have the opportunity to have that expunged. Especially if they plan to join the military, because they do background checks, we deal with the recruiters, we deal with medical, also, they plan to have a career in the medical field, they do background checks. Also, they plan to have a career in the medical field. They do background checks. And so, going back to the police department, you know, them being very professional. I always get compliments. We have defendants that are real happy because they got a citation and the way they were treated, very professional and with respect. And so, I also like to thank the fire department because they have been a big asset in our department in helping us move furniture around and, and putting pictures up. And anytime that, you know, we call them, they're always there. Even for injuries that we have, they're right there with their first aid kit. I also like to thank Sylvia because she's been a big asset in, in helping us take our court in the right direction. So, and, you know, we really appreciate all your support that you have given us.
Good deal, Henry.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, Henry, just wait a little bit while we make a motion on this. What's the favor of the council on item 33?
Mayor, I believe, I'm sorry, I believe you need to read the, the bottom.
We gotta approve it first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution number 2016-793.
Second. All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the first year that we participate in the Texas Municipal Week. And I invited the government class from the high school, and because of the short notice, they were not able to participate. But I have been graciously invited to do a presentation for all their government classes. Also, hopefully next year, with ample time, we can make arrangements for the, these students to come and visit the court and do a mock trial. And I really would like to get more active this week because I'm very competitive. And then when I go to the judges' conferences and they talk about all of this, I would like to have Aransas Pass recognized and put us on the map, too.
Yeah, do a fine job. I want to finish this up. As part of Resolution 2016-793, whereas the city council recognizes the constitution of the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, included indigent defendants, and supports Aransas Pass Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, that the week of November 7th through the 11th, 2016, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week, recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Aransas Pass, passed and approved on this day of the 7th of November, from Mayor LaChopp, and the test by the city secretary. So this is for you, Henry. Millie, thank y'all so much. I know you've done your hard work, your work, and your time is very much appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I also would like to extend an invitation. We're having a reception Thursday at 11:00. They're in the courtroom, and everybody that's present, you're welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. This is going to bring us to item 5, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request. If a discussion is considered, desired, it will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. That brings us to item 5, one approval of the regular minutes of October 3rd, 2016, and October 17th, 2016.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Lawrence, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 61, I declare public hearing open on the matter of demolition of buildings. Mr. Wells?
Mayor and council, we have six items that are on the agenda this evening. There are four of them that have been removed from the request for council doing any action. They have self-resolved their own selves.
Which, which ones are those?
Item A, 334 South 11th Street. A demolition permit has been issued for that property. Agenda item B, that one, the relatives of the owners of the property came forward today and have made arrangements to try to get the property into their name, and that will be brought back to council in 90 days. No action is taken on that. Item D, 524 North Whitney. Demolition, voluntary demolition request has been made by the property owner on that property. And agenda item F, 729 North Houston. Voluntary demolition has been provided to the city for that property.
Okay, so we have item C and E then?
Item number C and E.
C is 330 North 7th Street.
Yes, sir. Title search was obtained on the property. Pictures of the property was taken on January 15th. Been no change to the property. The property owners that are listed here did show up for the building board standards and appeals meeting. They referred that that property had been given back to the bank in foreclosure, but banks do not take the property back. They said they don't have any, care what happens to the property. There's a storage building on the property. They had thought that this storage building had been removed a long time ago. It has not been removed. So you can tell by the pictures there, very poor condition. We've had vagrants hanging around it. It's a place that is attract nuisance and is not to be moved. Recommendation is to proceed with demolition of that property.
Item E, 624 North Route.
This property, the owner was sent a registered letter. There has been a property, a title search done on it. The pictures were taken in August this year. Staff has attempted several times to locate the owners. We've not had any response back. Everything comes back to us, undeliverable. There's not, doesn't appear to be any legal ownership to the property. We've done all the research we can with it and exhausted all means of finding a property owner. For the, staff recommends approval to proceed with demolition on this property.
Very good. Are there any questions about counsel?
No.
Well, I know from E, I think that both of them have passed away. It's been a while.
That's my understanding that they, and we cannot find any heirs to the property, and no one has come forward.
Does anyone, does anyone in the audience have any questions? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There are motions for considering act of demolition on the follow items of C and E.
I make a motion that we can proceed with the demolition of properties listed on C and E.
Second the motion.
All the affairs say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Sylvia?
Mayor and council, the first item before you is a consider an act on a request from Magnus Beck to waive the penalty and interest for a property located lots 17 through 22 on South Whitney, the northwest corner. We had a weed lot lien placed on this property in May 2010 with penalties and interest that has ballooned to $398.63. Mr. Beck said he was unaware of the lien and is willing to pay the cost of the lien of $225, and is requesting 173.63 be waived by the council.
How long ago has this lien been on, the property?
2010.
2010.
May of 2010.
Well, I make a motion that we remove the penalty and interest of $173.63.
Second that motion.
All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
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 The next item before you is a request by Mr. Roland Benya to terminate his facility license agreement early for November 30th of 2016. He is requesting it to be terminated one month early due to a slow season. And I believe Mr. Benya's daughter is here, if you have any questions.
Do you have anything you want to add to it?
Well, it's just been a slow season. I want to thank Sylvia, I want to thank Mr. Gomez for coming out at the same time. We've had a lot of issues with season with rainouts, flooding.
If you can speak to the microphone.
With rainouts, flooding, due to pipes bursting, we've had a lot of issues. The list goes on of different issues we've had, and they've been a lot of help. So I just want to thank, thank y'all for that. We're asking to terminate a month early because, we're thinking because of the construction, the slow season of construction around here, Gulf Marine not having a lot of projects, Kewitt. We haven't had a big turnout on our mans, and that's what normally pulls us through. And we've put it out there for this next month, December, and we haven't had any feedback enough to have a season. So that's why we're requesting a month early.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the termination of the lease in effective November 30th, 2016.
Second. All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the next item is another one of those squirrely tax resale properties. Poor Mr. Ochoa. He bid on a piece of property that's located on the area McClung, McCambell, and I'll tell you here in a minute. This is, this is the property in question, Spencer. He made a bid, you guys accepted the bid. The other entities denied the bid. So it put them in a bid off, and the increased bid is $6,200, which the school has already approved the $6,200, and that is a bid to next lots. So the total amount due is 93,1401 to all entities. Mr. Ochoa had bid $3,500. The higher offer was made for $6,200.
Do you have a chance to counter it, or you just didn't count?
I think when they do the bid off, they go to, in front of the court, and they start.
It is, it is a bid off, and that was, that was the extent that he wanted to apply.
Look like next lots got it.
So the city would receive 24, 53, oh, I'm sorry, the city would receive 12, $1,227.63, which is roughly 50% of what it's owed.
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to, what is the?
Next lots.
Next lots, of 6,200.
Second the motion.
All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This, I hope this shows the interest in property around here.
I think so.
Speculators continue to drive up the cost of property.
Next lots has bid quite a bit on some properties.
Next lots has bid quite a bit. We made sure that the properties they have currently in their possession were in compliance, so.
Keep an eye, make sure they move.
Yes.
Seven four.
The next item is the annual partnership with the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce. That was Rosemary's presentation earlier. The action item is the visitor center, the actual contract, which is verbatim to last year. It is 70% of hotel motel in exchange for operation of the visitor center and marketing.
Mayor, I want to abstain for this as my husband serves on the board.
There are motions for approval.
I make a motion that we renew the hotel motel agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Chamber of Commerce.
Second. All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Billy.
Seven five.
The next item is, this is a new process that you're going to see. As, as we begin to apply for community development block grants, before, it used to be that you apply for the grant, and you get awarded the grant, and then you go into the feasibility studies. They're turning the process around a little bit, and they're asking you to do your feasibility upfront to make sure the project's even viable. So that results in the city needing to appoint a selection review committee. They send you a list of engineers and grant administrators that are willing to participate in CDBG. We solicit bids, and then the selection review committee has to go through those bids and then appoint, and then we apply, so. We are recommending that one member of the council, myself and the Director of Public Works, be appointed on the particular committee that's going to cull through the proposals, the requests for proposals that are submitted.
And the mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor Councilmember four.
Should there be an even number? Shouldn't there be like a, I don't know. If you're voting, not even have a split there, could have a two and two.
Well, we can include other employees and other elected officials. This is, you guys need to appoint among yourselves.
I would say possibly at the finance.
Okay.
Director.
Okay.
I don't know what the rest of y'all think.
No, that's good.
Which council member wants to volunteer or be appointed? I hear crickets up there.
I'll do it.
Okay, Phil.
When's the meeting gonna be?
Well, I, we don't, we have not, uh...
It'll be Saturday at 7:00 in the morning.
We have not made a determination at far... I, I mean, obviously, we'll work with your schedules. We will work with schedules. We, we have not determined a meeting yet. So at this point, I have the mayor, council member Hyatt, the finance director, the city manager, and the director of public works.
I make a motion, we accept the mayor and Philip Hyatt, finance director, city manager, and public works director.
Second. All the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven six.
Seven six is renewal of our contract for our annual financial audit with Brenda McElwee. The council entered into a contract with her a few years ago. She's done it for the past two years. This year, I'm requesting that we enter into a three-year contract for the reasons stipulated below. We're at the point of not only are we going to do an audit, but we need to move to the next step, and that is doing a consolidated annual financial report. I know a lot of you ask, well, where's the money for the historical commission? Where's the money for the overbid? Where's the money for all of those things? A CAFER would bring all of that together and show you where everything is at and what's earning. On top of that, in the next couple of years, I really want to move toward aiming that we get not only a governmental award for our budget process, but also that we tie our performance measures so that we can let the residents know dollar for dollar, how many linear feet of street are we paving, for example? How many parks are we mowing? How many acres are we cleaning, street sweeping, those kinds of things? Right now, our numbers are not tied that way. So it's a process, and it's going to be a painstaking process for her in the beginning and for, I'm sorry, Sandra, the finance staff. But it's a necessary evil. We are behind. We're the only city in our area that has not moved to this particular type of reporting.
So, so for instance... So Sylvia, for instance, like, let's say Inglesides has already started reporting, like, how many linear feet?
No, they're, that's, that's for us. What they have, what they have started is a budget and a CAFER. The City of Portland also, some of the other cities around this Rockport as well. We, we're lagging behind. We're lagging behind in our CAFR. The next step is that Baldridge Award, is that area that I want to be able to say, yes, for every dollar you spend, this is what you receive. Right now, I can give you sort of anecdotal based on work orders, but we should be to the point with the work orders and the improvements in technology that we've made to be able to give specific information.
Okay.
I think I hear her clacking down hall.
That's Sandra.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I make a motion that we award the three-year contract with Brenda McElwee.
You have to understand, you're voting for either just the audit or the audit and the CAFR.
The audit and the CAFR.
Okay.
Second. I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Seven seven.
Okay, that brings us to updates. Obviously, there is the utility billing that is on the minds and thoughts of not only the residents but of staff, and I'd like to give the council an update on where we are. At our last discussion, I told you we were going to average, and those people that fell out of the average, we're dealing on a one-on-one basis. We have a lot of people that say, somebody died, they don't live there anymore, or my child moved off, went to college, or, you know, there's a variety of reasons, and we're dealing with those on a one-to-one basis. What we have done this year is, I think we're almost complete of every single inventory in the city, and we are at the point of now resolving, there's over 1,200 meters yet to be exchanged out for radio meters. Of the about 4,100 accounts, the remainder of those are already radio meters. How we read those radio meters and how efficient we are in those radio meters, we're working on that process. The harder one is the manual read-to-read. So, over the last six weeks or so, we have GPS'd almost every single meter in town, and that's what you see up on the screen.
Wow.
It has taken painstaking hours of coordinates, and we've used every available resource and used Public Works. Right now, we have six temporary staff that are actually installing the new radio meters, and the goal is to get those installed by January 15th, all the way through. That's money that was budgeted in the cycle before I got here, so it just hadn't been extended, it had not been a priority to convert those, all of the city to radio meters. What we had been doing was as, an as-needed basis if there was a complaint. So, we're making a concerted effort to make sure not only every meter is touched, but touched accurately over the next three months. I will tell you, this has probably been one of the most difficult problems to crack because it was a problem from all angles, not just one particular root cause issue. But I think we've got a handle on it, and there's a plan, and the reads start again on the 9th of November, and they will go through November 16th, and we will be back on schedule with actual consumption, and our residents being able to not only pay online, but to view your consumption in graph format. The tech stop beautification project is.
I want to go back to that, Sylvia, on the average, how's that working? I mean, how do we know we have an actual average of the average in the past?
May, it's the council.
Speak up, come up here.
Well, that's under citizens' comment, Mayor, we're not there yet. This is just an update. Citizens' comment comes here in a little bit.
Well, citizens' comments, we get a chance, ma'am, sorry about that. But how's it work, though, on the average, though?
Well, what we did is we took 12 months of consumption from May of '15 to May of '16, and compared it to what we thought we had in the current meter system. Most of the time, things fell into place, but because there was such a question as to how many meters were actually in the ground, how many had we touched, we touched all 4,100 and not just the 700 that fell out of range. For the most part, when I explain that to people and I show them the graph, I go into the level of detail of how we arrived to the number, pretty much everybody understands. The ones that are out of question are, like I said, those that had a family member move out, or a child go off to college, those kinds of things, and we deal with those on a one-on-one basis. We have found some issues with our radio meters, and I had explained to the council with the lines being crossed, a meter assigned to one particular person doesn't go to that house, and we just have to deal with those as we find them on a one-on-one particular basis.
Are we going to look at probably correcting that?
Yes, and that means digging up the line, and over the weekend, we have been on several properties where we've had to actually go on the private side of the line to try to correct and trace that line, and it is a painstaking process because these are two-inch galvanized in some cases that are just crumbling under the weight or under pressure. And every time we touch it, you know, something happens. There's been a number of occasions where we touch a meter, and then the customer side of the line just breaks and crumbles, and so we're at the point of helping with plumbers coming out, trying to address the situation, so we don't leave people without water.
All right.
So.
One of the deals here I brought up was just on the average of scrubbing the bills, which was just manually input and everything, right?
Yes, we manually scrubbed, like I said, over 30,000 lines of text. What we've done now is we've gotten with the software company, we're wiping out the June to, well, the July through basically October data, and coming up and backfilling with those averages. It's going to throw off a graph when you see it, it's only going to, it's going to show zero consumption during those months, but I'd rather us go on information that's known as opposed to question what's there in terms of whether it was a manual read or a radio read. I would venture to tell you 90 to 95% of our radio reads are accurate, but like I said, you couldn't just touch 700 accounts and walk away from it, because that would have been the easy way out. We could have just touched the accounts that were at question and walked away and, you know, pretended like there wasn't a problem.
Because I know personally, my wife did our water bills and stuff, and your average turned out to 109 for us. We came in, we got charged $20 less. So, when she brought it up to the person up front, I said, oh, well, we did it manually and messed up, made a mistake. That's what I was told to my wife. Then my mother lives at the housing authority for the older people, and she got billed twice. And that's Social Security check that she gets, it's very limited, and for her to get pulled twice in one month, which they told my wife they would credit her for next month.
She got like a $32, she got like a $32 bill, because I remember talking about the situation with Mel in terms of what the actual amount of consumption was, and I think there was an issue on the number. Somebody had, somebody in your family had a new account and hadn't been there for 12 months. So, just to give you an idea of the process, is we took all of the amounts that the system threw out and divided it by 12. Those amounts that fell below what a minimum bill should be, and if you live in the city, a minimum bill for you is going to be about $26 to $30, assuming you have all of the services, water, sewer, trash, everything else. Any bill that fell under that, we kicked out and said, okay, those bills require further verification. All the other bills, okay to mail out. So, it was sort of a three-step process, not only the bank, the accounts that get drafted because we froze those, we didn't want anybody to get overdrafted or underdrafted. We froze the accounts that fell out of that range, and then what was the normal accounts? So, if she got multiple bills, it's because she showed up on either falling out of the range or maybe being bank drafted. I don't know exactly, but it was a manual process, and I think I mentioned that in y'all's memo that.
Yeah, she was bank drafted, but my deal, like I told Grace, and I appreciate Grace taking the extra step to take care of that while doing other things, but my deal is, she's Social Security, she gets, she's lucky, 500, maybe four something a month to live off, so get it twice, pull it from her account, doesn't help her out any. That brings, as her son, it makes me upset, because I told Grace, you should have told him, no, credit, pull it out the way it should have been, but.
And we should have credited the account back, and if Grace didn't request that, I apologize, but we should have credited the account back.
But no, that's why I told Grace, because, I mean, of course.
No, credit it back to the bank account, not to the bill. Credit it back to the bank account.
Well, I think what they told her was just keep the double, and well, next month we'll make it right and not charge her, which to me wasn't right to begin with, but when you work a lot of hours and you miscommunicate, it happens. That's on my personal note. So, if it happens to me, and what it happens to all the other taxpayers too, that may have an issue or not have an issue.
Well, like Grace called me, and I gave her a screenshot by screenshot, even to the point of giving her the serial number on your meter.
Yeah, I saw the breakdown, you copied me on it.
We've done the same thing to every single resident who has a question.
But on the screenshots, I don't know what you wrote, because the screenshots, they were not legible on the print.
I gave them to her again. She couldn't read them in the email, I sent them as individual Word documents.
Separate, deal's right.
Yes, yes. So, the same explanation we gave to Grace, we gave to every resident that has called. And that's the mechanism, because all we're dealing with are numbers, and everybody is a person, not just necessarily a number. And I don't know who's moved in, who's moved out, so I personally have answered almost every single email that I get that I'm copied on, because I'm copied on, we created a new mailbox, and I'm copied on it, and from an industrial customer to a residential customer. We hand-delivered some bills for some people that needed correction, so I think from a customer service perspective, yes, it was a debacle to begin with, but we have done everything but bend over backwards to make sure that it's right.
And our meter readers, are they, are they trained for to read the meters? Does it do the person that sold it to us, or is there a course online, or?
No, the meter readers, up until this past month, were trained by the meter reader before them. There's no standard operating procedure. Now, we have the meter company coming in, we're having, yeah, but that's new, that had not been the case. As is with most of the positions here, it's institutional knowledge on how you learn your job. And that was part of the problem, is processes that we passed on that, you know, have been the process for the last 15, 20, 30 years is how things were being read.
And to be a meter reader, you don't have to have a water D license?
I'm sorry?
To be a meter reader, you don't have to have a license D or C or A or B or anything?
You should have, and I know somebody brought up, while they're touching the water system, we are not the water purveyor. San Patricio Municipal Water District is. If we were treating the water and we were doing all of that, yes, there's a different license that's required. No, to read the meters, you're not required to have a specific license. To change out the meter, would it be great to have a license? Yes, it would be great, but it's not required.
Because I think Port Oransus, they have to have a D license at least, they're their own water authority, is that what that was?
Yeah. There would be no way to have folks get a D license and move to switch the meters out and move to get the meters read in the short periods of time that we have. So, inasmuch as stop the hemorrhaging, stop the dam from breaking any further, that's the decision.
Do we have any people that are employed that have any licenses at all in that department?
In the meter reading?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe so. We had some people at one point in time, one of them has moved on to another city, and another one had come to us from a different city, but had some issues and the drive was too far, so he's moved on. Most of our staff in the reading department is relatively new. JP's been here for some time, but JP is now really working the front of the house in the utilities business office. So, that leaves John, our most tenured employee, you know, at less than five years here. David Harris is our newest employee, and he's 120 days here or less, so that gives you an idea of what the employee experience is at that level. That takes me to the tech stop beautification project. We do have, I want to thank Keep Oransus Pass Beautiful and also our Brenda McElwee and the group that have pushed the beautification. I want to give you guys a picture of what Harrison Boulevard is going to look like at some point next year. And this is not any city money, this is completely, completely, completely tech stop money. So, you will see they're going to pull out, and it's part of their beautification and adding green space so that less asphalt and less heat transfer, those kinds of things. So, they're taking out all, any concrete, anything that's there, the bell and the anchor and things are all going to be taken out. There's going to be palms and green and native grasses all in this entire area. So, it's going to go basically here to City Hall to the turn right where the May Allen Building is. The city is going to try to partner with them and do the rest of that boulevard, all the way to Commercial, and then also the boulevard that's over here by the Donan Palace on 35 at the end of Commercial.
When will that project start, too?
Tech Stop expects to let the contract in April of 2017. The community park fencing, Mr. Benya has just about completed the portion for the adult softball fields. The dog park has already been enclosed. The final contract documents for the Little League are almost complete, so that should be completed by the end of December, which includes the area around the skate park. Highland Johnson is a much anticipated street. Highland has faced some issues with dewatering, the water table is very high there, so J.J. Fox expects that project to be done at the end of November, early December, and then we will start the paving on Highland, which will take care of some of the issue, but then we start on Johnson. He's expecting Johnson to be complete at the end of April, which puts us into paving in early summer. So, the headaches continue for the Highland and Johnson area.
I noticed someone went there and put in some kind of like, a little bit of gravel on the side on Johnson.
There was some area that we were told was very narrow and cars were having to come in, so we did just go in and put some Kaliche. It's not a permanent fix, as we're going to pave that area next year.
Is the road wide enough? Is it the minimum standards or?
No, the road's going to be widened quite a bit. What you see right now is not going to be the final width of the road. 13th Street has also been completed from the contractor's perspective. We're going to start paving next week, and that should take us about a month to six weeks to complete, assuming the weather holds. They did go in, the council approved not just the drainage system, but they upgraded the manholes, the sewer system, and the water lines there. So, 13th Street basically is all reconstructed underneath that particular area, anyway.
Had one of the residents kind of wanted to be on the agenda just to give everybody hugs of what they've done.
Well, the last rain, this past rain event this other day normally would have flooded that area, and there was some deep rutting in some areas, but that's really because it's a Kaliche base, it's not fully compacted yet, starting mid next week. The post trunk-or-treat events, I don't know if any of the council members saw the post, but my goodness, I don't think the staff even expected the amount of people that were going to come out to trunk-or-treat. We have, we gave out, we prepared 400 candy bags, and those were gone within the first hour. Some counts estimate 15,000 to 20,000 pieces of candy given out. It is a huge event, it was a huge success, Public Works and the staff knocked it out of the park, but get ready, next year, I mean, the kids had nothing but great things to say, and the businesses now finally, you know, I guess, recognized the popularity of this event, and we had about 20 to 25 vehicles, and they all handed out every single piece of candy that they had, and it went right through nine o'clock. Our fall feast is scheduled the Thursday before Thanksgiving, we've moved it back. We've tried a couple of different days. Last year, we tried it the week of Thanksgiving, we only had about 400 people show up. The year before that, we tried it the week before, we had close to 500, 550 people show up. This year, we're expecting about 700, 725 people, and that is, I believe it's November 17.
That's what I'm seeing, huh?
Yes. And that follows up with our shoe drive. Payless is our partner for the shoe drive. We are trying to coordinate during the buy one, get one, which stretches the dollar. For those of you that have participated before, you know the kids get really excited about socks, so we're going to make it an effort this year that, you know, everybody gets at least a pair of socks.
And what's that date? You have a date yet?
I don't have a date yet, I'm expecting it to be the second week of December. That event also, we tried to move closer to the Christmas holiday, and so many folks were out of town, school had let out a couple of days before, so it wasn't as big a turnout, and kids got multiple pairs of shoes. And that's what I have.
Do we have anything for finance or anything?
No, we're ready for Christmas.
Ma'am, the floor's not open for you if you want to speak for citizen comments?
Yes, City Council, I don't know how to address you, but.
Anyway, concerning by what she just said about the utility bill.
Is there a name and address, please, ma'am?
My name is Annie Roberts at 751 South 11th here in town. Anyway, concerning by what she just said about the water bill and about itemizing the water bill and about water leaks, and the reason why she was saying about, the reason why she was talking about, she told me to itemize the water bill is because of how much water the city lost over a year. And the reason why she was saying about, um, the reason why she was talking about item, she told me to itemize the water bill is because of how much water the city lost over a year. Well, just like I told her in the back of my house, the city had a real bad water leak. And on this real bad water leak, it ran on my property for over a week. And that low land had filled up with water. And as I told her, I don't see why I had to have a itemized bill stating that my bill, which it was what? One bill back in February was three dollars more than what my bill was in August. And, uh, I told her, I don't see why she need to itemize it where she's charging me twenty, thirty dollars more for water. And I said, well, for what? To make a equal, equal for the amount of water I use for each month? Because the city charge you for water, get, where's the bill at? The city charge you for water, charge you for, uh, drainage, wait a minute, oh, no, it's D R A, I don't know what that stands for. Two dollars and fifty cents for that, ambulance, which is two dollars and fifty cent, fire, which is one fifty. And then I have to pay thirty dollars for a security system every year, thirty to fifty dollars for a security system for every year with the city. That's not included in this, this here. Garbage, which is twenty-four, sewage, twenty-two, and then the tax. And then she called, itemized it, and I act, I called him, I don't know how many times this week, well, last week, when I got that hundred and one dollars for a bill stating, uh, if you haven't paid your October bill, well, I gotta pay it for November and December. Well, just like I, I called and kept calling, so I finally got the street department out there to bring out there, and they found a water leak on their side, thank God. But I have friends and associates that has water bill since they started with that, um, since they started with the, um, smart meter or whatever. Six hundred and something dollars, I know one girl had a thousand dollar water bill. And I don't want that to happen to me and then you all say, well, you gotta pay for it.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm here right now to find out why in the world the city called herself itemizing a bill and, uh, got, uh, uh, itemizing my bill to equal up the full amount for each, to me, for each month. When you all got a water leak on my property, which you won't even fix. I told the guy, I said, well, I'm home today, I said, could you come out? Which I know I got water standing, I don't see how they could did it anyway. Then I asked her about a water sample because my, in my bathroom, it has a bad odor when the water come on. And then on the outside, when I opened up the outside meter, when I kept seeing that water on that property back there with the meter, I said, well, I'm going back there to see if it dried up yet, it's been pretty sunny before, before the rain started. Sure enough, it's still wet. That's what made me get concerned, it's a water leak back here.
Right.
And I was trying to kill that bamboo, and here it is, the city wanna charge me five hundred dollars to kill some, to cut down some bamboo, and I've been trying to cut it down. And they've property across the street, that's where it came from, across the alley, and still to them say, well, we don't know who the owner is. Well, if you wanna, I couldn't put, to get to the water, back to the water, I couldn't put down that poison because I was scared it was gonna get in my water line. So anyway, still haven't got to it, you know, I cannot, and, uh, I called the utility board, and the utility board said, well, you need to go to the city council. I don't see how in the world the city gonna lose water, which I under, I don't see how in the world the city gonna use, lose water. And then turn around and gonna charge me February, my bill was three dollars more than what it was this year, but I mean, this month. And then gonna take my eighty-nine dollar bill, here I am bragging, I had two months of eighty-nine dollar bill, and put it up to a hundred and one dollars? And only one person stay in the house? Come on. The city shouldn't do that.
Right.
Be, I think it's wrong, call herself itemizing, when the simple reason, they should, if you ain't got enough employees.
Give you an extra read and pay what you used, right?
True. And, uh, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what to tell you all, ask you all, but I, all I am here to say is, you all are wrong for itemizing my bill. Cause I think it's high enough and I pay enough. You know, I gotta pay for fire, I gotta pay for water, ambulance service, which you know, we need it, I understand that. But golly, I understand a dollar cheaper also.
Yeah.
A dollar less make a whole lot difference to me.
I agree with you.
I don't know about nobody else. And I feel like whatever you all doing about this itemizing, I feel like it's wrong.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
And, uh, I still like to have my water sampled because of that leak.
Who would you give it to, Fernando Gold, somebody go out there?
And see, and you know what else? Excuse me. You know what she told me? She said, well, I had to call, I got in on my phone, she told me I had to call Corpus Christi. It's a guy named Ro, Roll, Ramos, Roland, Roland Ramos, I got him on my cellphone. Anyway, he said, well, I go out there and, he was willing to go out there and test my water. And here she is, told me she, she couldn't do it. Only reason why he didn't get to it is because I wasn't at home. And he couldn't go in my yard without someone there.
Right.
I got him on the, on my voicemail.
Ms. Roberts, I, I don't know who you've spoken to, but it hasn't been, I promise you.
Your name, Sandra?
No, it's still me. Hasn't been me.
I spoke to Silver, Sandra.
I'm Silver, right?
In the water department.
There is a mechanism to get your water tested, and if you have any questions about your bill, please feel free to get me involved. I have not spoken to.
I don't know how sanitized it's supposed to be, but I bought this jar from Walmart's and filled it up with the water.
We, we, we will send somebody out to take a water sample.
It's my, you gotta come in from the back. I got a dog there, he gets very vicious.
Uh-oh.
He's not vicious, but he gets very loud.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Sure.
Seven fifty-one South Eleven?
Yes, seven fifty-one South Eleven.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, for coming out.
Sure.
Yes, sir. You're up.
Hello.
How you doing, sir?
My name is Zane Nutt, fifteen oh five West Chillicothe. I'm also here about the water bills. I got the great pleasure to go to Japan for about a month, last month. And I come back and I get a bill from the city saying that I should pay two, two different deals in October and November for seventy-six dollars and seventy, uh, four cents. And so I, I went down to the city and I got a copy of last year's bill. And here they are right here. And I added them all up, and except for the, in June, uh, my bill jumped up a little bit, cause I had a leak. In July, it went up to two hundred dollars, and in August, it went up to two hundred dollars, and I got it fixed. Okay. But I added all the other ones up and they don't even, they don't add up to seventy-six dollars and, and, uh, seventy-four cents. Uh, I was gone so long to Japan that, uh, y'all know the weather's terrible around here, it's been about a hundred, a hundred degrees felt every day, everybody's been miserable. I was actually here two days during the electric month, and my electric bill is twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. So I wasn't in Oransas Pass any time for a long time, and so I, I'm not, I don't think I should be able to pay that much. And let me tell you something else, I'm an old man and I used to work offshore and we had water delivered to us. And I don't understand how this, uh, that I can use sixty-one hundred gallons is what I'm guessing? Or is it six hundred? And then over here is sixteen thousand one hundred? And I'm going, geez, I can't use more than fifteen hundred gallons in a month. And that's way too much. My garbage that goes out is a half a can in a whole month, that's all I use. I don't hardly use any water or anything, I have water wells to water everything that I wanna water. And I don't understand why my water bill is so much. And here's what's something that's interesting about it. Since, since two thousand and ten, it's gone up about seventy percent. That's pretty close to what I think it's gone up, but I can't remember what it was before, I think I have a number, figured it out, it's been a seventy percent increase. Now I got a friend over in Ingleside that, uh, that y'all, I know y'all wanna bring young couples, okay? You want them to live here, you want them to, to help the tax base, you also want retirees, if they make between a half a million to two million dollars, y'all glad to see them. And there's a couple over there that I know that fits that description. And they come down here and they built a brand-new house over in Ingleside. And I asked them, why didn't you go over to Oransas Pass? They said, we check the taxes, too high. That's what they said. And I'd be glad to ask her to come down and talk to y'all. She said, the tax is too high, we can't, we, we're not gonna live over in Oransas Pass, we're gonna build a brand-new house in Ingleside. So I, I'm not saying that y'all aren't doing some great things, I've seen the presentation, it's fabulous, I've seen a lot of neat stuff. But everyone's a hall, maybe not quite such a Cadillac, old Ford truck'll get you there just as good. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Your, your average is probably skewed because of those leaks that you had last year, because it was a timeframe from May to May, but we'll be happy to look at it.
Okay. Well, at least one month, since then, it's, boy, this, I think it's gonna be down. And I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, though, I'm, I'm gonna go get a certified, I think I'm gonna get a certified, uh, 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 meter and, uh, and then, uh, call the Texas Rangers if it's way off like I think it is. I don't use probably any water at all, really don't.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to make citizen comment? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is David Hilarides, I work for Cable One at ten forty-five South Commercial. Um, it's my privilege and pleasure to represent the members of Leadership Oransas Pass Class Number Five this evening. And for information purposes, as many of you know, as a part of our training, we are asked to develop and implement a class project. And we would like to work with the city to develop and install several new signs throughout the city that fall under the TechStop guidelines for Wayfinding Guide signs. Um, it will impact the city attorney just a little bit on that. But with the new fencing and the work being done at the city parks, new signage might be something that will get more travelers' eyes to the city parks and recreation facilities that we have to offer here. There are specific guidelines for the, that the city must work with, with TechStop, uh, in the Wayfinding Guide sign program. And we wanted to make you aware of our intentions before we come with a formal proposal. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for going over there.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Is there anybody else who'd like to make citizen comment?
Hello, my name is Quincy Cooper, I reside at six oh five West Matlock. Um, and I just want to clarify, uh, some things that was told to me by the city secretary. Uh, I received my bill for October, the earlier part of the month, and it was sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. And our bill's been averaging eighty-five dollars a month, so I did think that that was pretty low. I was like, something's not right, that seems low, uh, we were home, it's not like we were gone away. And then a few weeks later, we received a letter in the mail saying that we owed an additional one thirty-nine seventy-nine. So then that's when I called up to the city and talked to the city secretary and she explained to me about the averaging that they were doing. Now, I did agree that I did have some family members over, which more people in the house equal more water usage. So I went ahead and paid the one thirty-nine seventy-nine on top of the sixty-seven fifty-one that I paid earlier. But I was told that, um, if I was overcharged, that the city would credit my account for the following month. Who's the city secretary?
I am, but I didn't.
Karina?
That's, that's her assistant.
So, so when you enter, you apply the bill for October and you pay two seven fifty-one.
Yes, ma'am, happy to hear.
And then you have the letter for one thirty-nine seventy-nine.
Yes, ma'am.
So we will subtract sixty-seven fifty-one from your one thirty-nine seventy-nine. You don't owe, if you were under billed, you don't owe any additional, your November bill will be one thirty-nine seventy-nine.
Which I already paid the one thirty-nine seventy-nine.
Then you don't owe anything.
Then I don't owe anything. Okay. Okay, great. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Quincy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, I had you.
It happens a lot, right, Mary?
We, we can send you a letter for that effect.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to make citizen comment? If not, that will close our citizen comments. We're gonna move to the second session, item eight five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with city attorney over harbor leases. Item fourteen B six five five one point oh seventy-four, personnel matters with the city manager. Thank y'all for coming out, if y'all don't make it till we get back, appreciate y'all taking the time to be out here this evening, and I wish y'all safe trip home. If you do stay, well, I wish, I hope y'all stay. See you in a little bit.